I'd like to call to order the January 2nd meeting, regular formal meeting of the, January 2nd, 2018, regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call, please.
Botchway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sully.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Here. Item two, proclamations, but before we do that, I want to welcome everybody to your city hall on this very cold January 2nd evening. I don't know what the temperature is outside. What is it, like minus 27 or something? I don't know. It's pretty cold. Anyhow, thank you all for coming. So, item two, proclamations. Have one proclamation to read. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. believed that a person's worth should not be measured by his or her color, culture, or class, but rather by his or her commitment to creating a better life for all by living a life of service for others. And whereas Dr. King's message of peace and service and his dream of pursuing a world free from prejudice and injustice lives on and has not been forgotten since his tragic death on April 4, 1968. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream of racial equality, understanding, service, and social justice is an inspiration to all of us. And whereas service to others is a bond that unites us and helps us to define a vision achievable by working for the common good. And whereas there are many ways to show service and respect to others, such as collecting books for schools or food for a food bank, planting a tree, donating blood, volunteering at a senior center, or serving meals to persons who are homeless, and many others. And whereas the city of Iowa City joins with others in this community in tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the city of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 15, 2018, to be Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Iowa City, and I urge all to join me in the celebration thereof and to take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's message of the principles of justice and equality for all. I understand that Arianna Aron is going to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Human Rights Commission, we encourage you all to participate in the numerous activities and events Monday, January 15, in honor of Dr. King. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item three, consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item four, community comment. This is for items, any item that anybody would like to discuss that's not on the formal meeting agenda already. Please feel free to come up, state your name, and tell us what's on your mind. Good evening, Adil.
Good evening. Today, I would like to verify something. After reading the recent publication for the Press Citizen on December 30, 2017, this article awarding Mr. Mazaheer, I mean, the Press Citizen Person of the Year, and that's okay. In this article, it was mentioned that she was one of the co-founders of the Center of Worker Justice. Yes, I would like to clarify this point. While I am proud of Ms. Mazaheer, I would like to clarify the critical aspect of this piece, the Voice of Immigrant. This one started the first meeting to create this agency. It was called Voice of Immigrant Organization. It was founded a long time ago before Mr. Mazaheer came from Virginia to move to Iowa City. My friend, his name, Lamine Lemu, he invited me from South of Sudan, he invited me to come to the meeting for, to create new agency of immigrant at Iowa City Public Library. This organization had mission directly identical to the current Center of Worker Justice. Both the Voice of Immigrant and the Center of Worker Justice is the same, or are the same organizations. But the name was changed. After Messi, the Mexican lady, she moved and she becomes the manager of this agency, they changed the name to Worker Justice. So if Mr. Mazaheer worked at that time and they changed the name to Worker Justice, that not means she the founder of this agency. Founder of organizations, the original founder, Worker, hard to start the Voice of Immigrant, which when, when they turn into the center, so they called it after that Worker Justice. But it's the same, Worker Justice and Voice of Immigrant is the same, called the same Worker Justice, it is same that the article published in the Press Citizen totally disregard that they were previous founder before, as I said, Mr. Mazaheer, Ms. Mazaheer moved to Iowa City. I would like to request that the Center for Worker Justice get audited also in the future because this agency, since they created, we don't know anything about it. We are immigrant, we live here in Iowa City for 20 years, we don't know anything about it. So we want to know the budget, we want to know how this agency run, and thank you.
Thank you, Adil. Would anybody else care to address this? You need a motion?
So moved.
Accept.
Could I have a motion to accept correspondence? Kingsley makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
closed. Motion carries. All right, moving to item five.
I think you still got people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, yes, go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Ali Ahmed. I'm one of the founder for the Immigrant Voice and the Center for Worker Justice. I want to correct some information, Mr. Adil Adams, he submitted right now, and it's totally wrong. The Immigrant Voice is different from the Center. And the Immigrant Voice barred of the CWD. Thank you so much. And Ms. Mazaheer, we join us from the first step for the, first days for the Immigrant Voice and first days for the CWD. CWD different totally from Immigrant Voice. Immigrant Voice and the many organization, we found the Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ali. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to turn to item five, planning and zoning matters. Item 5A. Item 5A is rezoning sensitive areas planned for Lincoln School. This is an ordinance rezoning approximately 3.6 acres of property from Neighborhood Public P1 to plan development overlay Neighborhood Public OPD/P1 zone located at 300 Teeters Court. So does anybody need to make any ex parte disclosures? Okay, no one. I'll open the public hearing.
But I, yeah, no, I don't. But I am going to recuse myself. Just quickly, I have no knowledge of rezoning. It's not in my willhouse at all, but I don't want the perception that I, you know, anyway tainted or anything about this deliberation.
Right, okay. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Bob.
I'm Bob McLaughlin, Senior Planner, Department of Neighborhood and Development Services. The property is located on Teeters, adjacent to Ryder, with also access on River Street. The school district plans to renovate Lincoln School and do an addition, significant addition. The proposed renovation addition will provide more classroom space, gymnasium, cafeteria, and improve overall ADA accessibility. The plan also includes a expanded parking lot and bus circulation area on the River Street side of the property. The proposed addition is, is proposed to occur in an area that contains protected slopes and, and critical slopes. The zoning ordinance requires that we avoid development of protected slopes. Those are slopes of 40% or more, except in rare circumstances that I'll get to in a minute. It also requires that we minimize grading of critical slopes, and those are slopes of, excuse me, 25 to 40%. This is to help assure that hazardous conditions such as severe erosion or landslides are prevented. This also protects other environmentally sensitive areas that are often found in conjunction with steep slopes, such as woodlands, wetlands, and stream corridors. On this particular property, none of those other conditions exist. It's simply the slopes that we're looking at. The zoning code does provide for exceptions that allow for consideration of grading of protected slopes, including when the slope was previously graded or altered by human activity, or when it's essential for a public utility, such as a sanitary sewer line or storm sewer. In this case, the applicant has provided evidence to show that the slope was previously altered. It was, it was altered when the parking lot was put in in 1988, as well as when some drainage tiles were put in for an addition to the school. So that's one of the things that we have to find in order to allow future alteration of the slope. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff have reviewed the material submitted by the school district and agree that this slope was altered at some point in the past. We've also reviewed the proposed plans for the construction activity in the slope and found that it can be done without creating hazard or potential for a landslide. This image shows the proposed addition from the River Street parking lot, and the, you can see in the background on the illustration, the existing school. You can see that it's quite a change in grade. I believe it's 30 feet from the Teeters Street side of the property to the River Street side of the property. The slopes in question are generally in this area where there are protected slopes, and we believe that based on the information submitted, that those may have been created when the parking lot was put in and there was grading done for those. In any event, they were graded in the past when drain pipes were put in for a previous addition. So the plan would allow further alteration of those protected slopes, as well as alteration of the critical slopes on the property, roughly 60% of the critical slopes on the property. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission do recommend approval of this plan. There are a few details noted in the staff report, such as stormwater management, that will be reviewed in more detail when we review the site plan for the building permit. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Bob?
Just a quick question. They had talked about also the disturbance of the trees that are there, the existing trees, but they did plan to replant some trees?
Yes, there are some oak trees and some evergreens in this area that would be removed, and the proposal, I believe, includes at least 10 trees to replace those.
Of diverse species, is that correct?
Right, that was a concern of one of the Planning and Zoning Commission members, is that some of the oaks listed on their plan had recently been noted as susceptible to disease, so the Planning and Zoning Commission suggested that the city foresters sign off on the final plan in terms of which species are put in replacement.
Thank you, Bob. Would anybody else like to address this topic? All right, I'm not seeing anybody, so I need to ask our council members if you are inclined to vote in accordance with the planning and zoning's recommendation.
Yes.
And, all right, so I see a lot of heads nodding. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved by Taylor, seconded by Mims. Discussion.
I think it's been very well planned out, and I think after our support of the school bond issue recently, I think this plays right, right into that and with us working together with the school district, and this is like your typical true example of a neighborhood school, and it's great to see that it can remain viable, and also, I don't think you'd mentioned about making it more ADA compliant also, which is, which is a real key thing now, so I'm very supportive of it.
It's a great project. As Pauline mentioned and Bob mentioned, one of the constraints or conditions that it addresses is the fact that the parking lot was inaccessible to the building, 30-foot grade change, so you can now use the building to access the, the upper levels. And while it's in an area of sensitive slopes, no usable outdoor open space is being lost as a result of this project, which, this site isn't as small as Horace Mann, but it's, it's the second smallest site, so it's really encouraging to see that the area of development is not taking away any of the limited amount of open space that's available.
I love all of our elementary schools, but Mann, Longfellow, and Lincoln really hold a special place in my heart. I think of our old-fashioned neighborhood schools, and really to see the bond come into fruition the way that it is, and I view this as working symbiotically with the school district to make this happen. As John mentions, this is not an area that would otherwise probably be used in that sense, and I think the disturbance is kept to an absolute minimum. So I'm thrilled to support this zoning change to facilitate this new reimagining of Lincoln School.
I really like it, and my kids go to Lincoln, and I know how they really need this project to move forward, and I will support the zoning.
Excellent. I can say, I thought I knew most of the city, but I didn't know there was a parking lot here. Comes as a surprise to me, so wow, and now there's going to be an entrance to the school there and a much better turn, a drop-off spot for the school bus and everything. Great solution, so I'm thrilled to support this as well. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. We have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Kingsley.
He's coming.
Item 5B, zoning code amendment. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code, Article 5B, sign regulations to broaden the sign allowance and illumination requirements for institutional uses in residential, what does ID stand for? Industrial?
Interim.
Oh, interim development and OPD zones, and to allow plastic trim cap channel letters for signs above the fifth story on high-rise buildings. This is second consideration, but staff requests expedited action.
I move the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Sully. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Hearing?
I, just a quick comment that I appreciated the, the research into looking at the different cities and their sign regulations and their height regulations, and that was kind of interesting to see, it's kind of all over the board, so I think we'll, we'll have a very concise plan in place, and I'm in favor of it.
Good deal. Thanks for inserting, when the train's rolling, gotta get out of the way or hop aboard. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, item number six, Cardigan Park Improvement. This is a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Cardigan Park Improvement Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. Let me open the public hearing. Good evening, Zach.
Good evening. Zach Ray Hall, Superintendent of Parks with Parks and Recreation. In your packet, you found the plans and specs for the Cardigan Park redevelopment, or development as it should say, since this parcel, much like Fran Holtz Miller, has sat undeveloped for a number of years. It's a three-acre park on the east side of Iowa City, just south of Court Street. 2016, we held a, a public, public charrette on the park site where the neighbors came out and gave their input, and that was taken in by the consultants and staff and formulated into the park design. And then in 2017, we, we used neighborhood open space funds to have professional installation of the playground that you see before you, and this is kind of the first kickoff for the park design and the information that we heard from, from the neighbors. And then in your plans and specs is really kind of the overview, what you see here, you see some trail system, the playground, shelter, similar to what is at Fran Holtz Miller, and some butterfly gardens, tree species diversified throughout the site plantings, and a new addition would be a fire ring, so that's a little bit something different than what we don't have in other sites, but this, the site seems appropriate, and the neighbors were enthusiastic about it. So, construction timeline as far as schedule, holding the public hearing today, bid letting February 9th, and award date February 20th, with anticipated construction start late February, and then through the spring, early summer season. So if there's any questions at this time, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions for Zach?
Could you tell me a little bit more about the pollinator garden?
Yeah, so the neighbors had expressed, through the charrettes, they had expressed some interest in some type of butterfly garden, essentially pollinator garden, and so working with staff and working with consultants, we haven't formulated specifically what plant species will be going in all of the pollinator areas. I know we do have a plant list in the plans and specs, but the neighbors definitely showed some interest in kind of taking ownership of those and helping maintain those and having, having some buy-in and some input in that.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Looking forward to it, Zach. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address this topic? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
I think it's great to see, you know, more of our parks getting developed, working through that master park, plan master park, master plan park, whichever way the words go. Thank you. I had to cut the three words all in the wrong direction, tried it twice, but you know, no, just interesting to see and exciting to see these, you know, just keep moving forward, and we've got a lot to do and a lot of money that we need to spend, but every little piece helps, so glad to see it.
I also agree with Susan, and this is really exciting to see our parks being like, you know, renovated and making it like really working for everybody, but the only thing that I'm really concerned about is the ground, about the playground service. My understanding, this is a wood piece service, right?
It's, it's an engineered wood, fiber, yeah.
Yeah, just in the future, I'm not asking about this tonight, but I encourage the city to think about, you know, because we want our kids with disability to be included, and if they, in the future, if they can't take the service to the rubberized services, just like the one in, at the library at the ped mall, I know this is kind of expensive, but you know, we can look into it in the future, so our park can be like including everybody, so make it inclusion for the people, sorry, our kids with disability.
Well, I agree with Mazaheer, because I think we've looked at that before, as far as the parks, and what we'd heard was basically that the rubberized, and it's more expensive to start with, but in the long run, it's less because the wood chips, you have to continue to, to replace them, so I, I think it is something we need to seriously continue to look at.
Yeah, we'd be happy to break down those costs for you. I don't think that it's a cost savings in the long run, I think the rubberized surface is far more expensive. If I'm recalling correctly, the ped mall surfacing on just that playground was, was over $100,000, whereas a playground like you see there, the entire playground set itself, that's probably a $40,000 set of playground that covers roughly that same surface area, maybe as things spread out and you take in the, in the fall zone, so you're, you're looking at a substantial difference in, in cost. The engineered wood pieces are considered to be ADA compliant, but you have to stay up on them, you have to constantly bring them in as they get kicked around, you have to make sure that the, the depth is appropriate, and that's a challenge for staff to, to keep on that. But in the future, we'd be happy to, you know, lay out those costs for you and let you know, kind of on a per-square-foot basis, what you might expect. You know, part of the expense is, that rubberized surface has to go on a hard surface too, so you're really pouring a concrete pad and then putting the rubber on top of that.
It is quite expensive. I mean, I, I support the use of matting, I think it's extremely appropriate in the ped mall, which is more kind of urban setting. In a neighborhood park, you know, it is a question and part of cost, and in hearing Zach's presentation, I think, and Jeff's comment, one, one thing to consider, since I'm already sensing a little bit of volunteer effort here, that, you know, the neighborhood could help, you know, it's, it's not that difficult to move the chips around as necessary, it just requires someone to do it, and so that may be something to think about. There already is that, some unique features here, is the butterfly garden, fire ring, so I'm sensing support from the neighborhood to kind of become involved, and I think that's a good thing.
And what I'm liking in particular about the pollinator garden is it seemed like that was something that the residents themselves had suggested, so whether it's a pollinator garden or a food garden, I think more and more... garden or a food garden, I think more and more we're seeing this to be sort of an amenity that's sort of being normalized, which I really like, and of course, I think the pollinator garden in this particular context really adds some vitality, and hopefully allow the kids to experience a different part of a park.
Yeah, I know that park pretty well, because my son used to live right adjacent to it, and I always thought, once the park's developed as a park, it will really enhance the social cohesion of that area, and I'm pretty confident that it's actually going to happen, so I'm looking, my son no longer lives there, but I'm really excited for people who do, I think it'll really enhance the place. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item seven, Douglas Street and Douglas Court Water Main Improvements. This is a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Douglas Street and Douglas Court Water Main Improvements Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening.
Evening. Scott Silver, Senior Civil Engineer. I'm sure some of you may remember, about a year ago, we brought this project to you to talk about the inclusion of sidewalk, either on one side or both sides, of both Douglas Street and Douglas Court, and at that time, it was decided that we were going to forego the sidewalk options, and so no sidewalk is actually included in this project as designed. We spent the last year finalizing plans and specs and acquiring temporary easements. We had to acquire, I think, roughly 50 easements to be able to reconstruct the, not only the water main, but also the services up to the stop boxes. So, just in summary, the project includes new, all-new water main on both Douglas Street and Douglas Court, and then new services from the new main to the stop boxes, and then new driveway approaches. The reason why we're having to replace driveway approaches is most of the water services are located within the driveways. So with that, I'll answer any questions anybody may have.
Okay, any questions for Scott? I don't see any. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address this topic? Good evening, it's good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you again.
My name's Aaron Vanoy. It was mainly a question of what trees were going to go, and if the, or if my house was going to lose this tree, and also, I also had a quick question of, I had a problem with, essentially, my return, I had an issue, I just recently purchased this house in the past two years, thankful enough to be able to afford it very well. Long story short is, I'm having, because all but the water services are basically underneath the concrete of my driveway. From what I've been told, that is a common issue for freezing, and I don't know if this is true or false, I haven't done any research, so obviously, don't quote me, I don't know, I don't have any education when it comes down to that type of thing. Long story short, I am worried with, currently, I've had to basically rotor-ruder my return pipe, and as a result, I'm wondering, you know, how far am I going to be responsible for, obviously, there's a problem here, so I'm wondering, at what point will I take care of it, and, but also the tree, so I guess that kind of sums it up quickly, so, thank you.
You said your name's Aaron, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Scott, can you talk with Aaron, maybe outside or right after the meeting? Yeah, work through those questions, yeah, great, thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? Okay, this is something we asked staff to do, and they're doing it. Okay, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item eight, ordinance amending small employer definition. This is an ordinance amending Title II entitled Human Rights, Chapter I entitled Definitions to exclude small employers from the definition of employer matching the state code. This is second consideration, but staff has requested expedited action.
Moved. I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time. Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final consideration at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Botschway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item nine, 2018 Legislative Priorities. This is a resolution establishing the City of Iowa City's 2018 Legislative Priorities. Oh, Simon, you're going to summarize for us, sorry.
Briefly, yes, thank you. Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. The resolution you have in front of you tonight reflects the conversation that you had at your December 19th work session. One item that was discussed at the work session with our consultants that isn't reflected here is the discussion at the Alcohol and Beverages Division regarding licensing reform efforts, so we're keeping close tabs on that, we will be involved in those conversations going forward, but given that there's no legislation at this point, that isn't included in the priorities for this session. So, starting with the backfill, commercial and industrial property tax replacement payments, so you remember in 2013, the state legislature reduced the taxability of commercial properties and industrial properties down to 90%. At that point, they committed to backfilling those dollars to local governments to make us whole again for at least that piece of property tax reform. For the City of Iowa City, that equates to about $1.58 million annually, that is predominantly the general fund, so that goes to support our core services, parks, police, fire, general fund services. That equates to about 15 public safety officers, whether police officers or firefighters, to give you a sense of the magnitude of what that means to the general fund. The next priority listed, protecting home rule authority, this is one that you'll see across the board on League of Cities, Metro Coalition, it was in our priorities last year as well. The flexibility in additional revenue streams is noted specifically in the resolution, but this impacts any number of issues as we saw last session, including the alcohol licensing discussion. Based on Councilmember Botschway's suggestion at the work session, disproportionality in arrests and incarcerations is included in your priorities, we would support any legislation that addresses that. It is specifically noted in the resolution, a proposal from 2016, in which that data would be tracked, and it would set up something similar to our Community Police Review Board. Waste water and water infrastructure funding is included again, this is an issue that's come up at the legislature the last several years, this is something very important to us, of course, in terms of our stewardship of our waterways, but of, also in terms of financial implications when the state puts requirements on our water and wastewater treatment plants, of course, that has a financial implication for us, so as best we can, working with the legislature to incorporate agricultural interests and balance those with the city interests. And finally, we did include an item to support the Metro Coalition and League of Cities Legislative Priorities, as Jeff noted at the work session, you know, of course, across the board, all 10 cities in the Metro Coalition, or 900 cities in the state, aren't going to agree on every issue, and there are a couple items in there that certainly wouldn't be our top priorities, but as members of those organizations, we do our best to either stay out of the fray if it's something that's not important to us, and do our best to support those organizations. So that is the list of priorities for this year, and of course, happy to answer any questions or take any suggestions.
I think we got it. Thank you, Simon. Could I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion?
Start off just briefly, just break a brief statement, I have a tempered excitement regarding these priorities, specifically as it relates to supporting legislation to address racial disparities in arrest and incarceration. I want to first and foremost give my kudos to staff for crafting it literally kind of exactly spot on, I don't know how you got that from my gargled and jumbled mess, but I appreciate that. How you actually probably helped me on some other issues that I consistently have with, you know, crafting language around particular items and priorities that I want to put forth. You know, this is, to me, an issue from two standpoints, from a human rights and economic development standpoint, but I'll speak to the human rights standpoint first. The consistent subjugation of people of color has consistently been documented through our history. Iowa ranks within the top five of disproportionality, this has been well documented, and not too long ago, we were in the top two. The Midwest has a diversity problem, and not with people, but how we consistently act inhumane towards communities of color. This is a pattern that needs to stop. Economic development is something that I'm very supportive of as it comes to how we look at Iowa and the budget shortfall. We have a worker shortage, we have a skilled labor shortage, we have a shortage in teaching, we have a shortage in computer science, I mean, these are all things that have been documented well by, you know, Mark Nolte when he gives his normal ICAD address and other people throughout the community. However, I think unfortunately, we have people, we have people we have failed because of an antiquated system that seeks retribution and not restorative justice, and this needs to stop. I will say that tempered excitement, I have little faith that the legislature will actually act on this in a meaningful way, but I'm willing to be surprised, as I'm always, and I'm very supportive and excited about our police department and the work that it's been doing to move forward and use a data-driven approach. We need to continue this work, you'll see a lot of commentary as it pertains to racial equity from me in a more specific, more specific way, and I hope the rest of Iowa's watching.
Excellent, well said. Anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botschway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, Announcement of Vacancies. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. So there are several positions that have been announced previously, but I'll restate them. We have two vacancies to fill on expired terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term on the Community Police Review Board, one vacancy for Jefferson Street Representative to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Public Art Advisory Committee, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 9, 2018. Also, we have one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Senior Center Commission, applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 13, 2018. All right, I'm going to skip to item 12, City Council Information. Why don't we start with John, and move right?
I don't have anything in terms of council work that I can report, other than personal information of, or personal reporting on the, just enjoying being together with family and friends over the last couple of weeks, and hoping that this is indeed a Happy New Year.
I thought you were going to say you're enjoying the cold weather.
As crisp as a Macintosh apple and more.
Well, you know you're alive when you feel that cold.
I'd just like to mention, I don't know if everybody got the invitation, but the Tech Brew AM is at Merge next Tuesday, January 9, at 8:00 AM. This is always a good chance to hear from one of the tech companies in the area, I think I'm on is either sponsoring or they're going to be presenting, so encourage everybody if they can put that on their calendars.
So, it's Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 9th, at 8:00 AM at Merge. I think there is an RSVP, so if you didn't get the invite, you might just go to ICAD's website, or to, maybe the city can send it out.
You can just let me know, and I can get you registered if you're interested.
Okay.
Just as a point of addition, yeah, we have a council budget session that starts at 1:00 that afternoon.
Right. So, yeah, and other than that, just, you know, piggyback on John, I hope everybody had a good holiday season and is off to a good Happy New Year, and be careful out on the roads, and make sure your water pipes are well insulated, if not, just kind of keep the water trickling, I had one of my coworkers come in today who said their water pipes had frozen, so, yeah, be careful, it's cold out there, and take care of your pets, take care of your pets.
Pauline?
Yes, kind of on that note, too, just sort of a PSA on possibility of frostbite, those citizens that do their walks like they're supposed to, or if you're out walking your dog, or playing in the snow, whatever you do out there, be cautious of the potential for frostbite, it doesn't take long, 15 minutes to 30 minutes for exposed skin, but you can even get frostbite if it's covered, you're covered skin, so be very cautious of that, and keep warm as much as you can. And then Jim said I could share this, because I was very proud, I'm proud of my Icelandic heritage, I'm 50% Icelandic, and heard on the news that they were the first country in the nation to pass an equal pay for equal work law, so very proud of them, and I hope we can look forward to seeing that sometime in our country.
Okay, so, I am excited to announce the First Annual Breakfast on a Budget at 7:30 AM to 8:00, Charlie, I expect you to be there. On Saturday.
Kingsley's providing the food.
Well, not, yeah. Mingle, mingle with council members, talk about the budget, hear an awesome, I mean awesome, presentation by our own city manager, Jeff Bruin.
We have a spotlight.
On the budget. It's, I mean, it really is a can-miss event. I will tell you, I mean, again, I've said this before, you know, budgets, budgets aren't really like, you know, they aren't like the super exciting thing, if you look at the budget book, which has been handsomely kind of reduced substantially, I think recently, I would say that it's tough, but it is a huge driving force, and we think about initiatives as we move towards adjusting, welcoming Iowa City, and so, please be there, at least for Jeff's presentation, there will be food, there will be coffee, for people who don't drink coffee, there will be juice, so be there, 7:30, First Annual Breakfast on a Budget.
Did you say what date?
Saturday.
Okay, just making sure. I didn't hear it, so I went to six.
Yeah, the six, I couldn't remember the date. Don't come tomorrow, it's on Saturday, January 6.
So you're going to tweet this, aren't you?
I am going to tweet it out as soon as I get home.
All right, good man.
The other three things I have, or I guess two things, the other one was writing out, Susan mentioned, MLK festivities, they're coming up in the next couple weeks, there's actually a plan, and I hope to send it out in the next council packet, to have something on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, but definitely, if you can be there at many of the activities that Arion, or Ms. Arion brought up, or Aaron, Ms. Aaron brought up at the, at the council, or the community, not community, at the proclamation.
Presentation.
Proclamation. It's just important that, you know, council has wide-ranging representation there. And also additionally, on MLK Day in particular, there is an act-worthy launch event at Merge at 6:00 PM. I'm excited to possibly be able to speak about this website, and what it's going to try to do is provide opportunities for people to basically be a part of a, kind of a social media experience, to act on different initiatives that they feel is comfortable, and so, they feel comfortable with, so if you, if you're attending a budget session at 7, from 7:30 to 8:00, the First Annual Breakfast on a Budget, January 6, on Saturday, that could be something that's put out there, and then people can, you know,
and then people can, you know, say that they're going to support that and show up. And so it's less about the likes, and it's more about you're going to be taking that particular action. I think that's too many times where, you know, we're Facebook and Twitter couch potatoes, and we're not necessarily acting and doing something. And so I'm excited about the people that have put this together, I think Ross Katz, Sarah Chabola, I probably said both of their names wrong, and other, Simi and Tally, other people that are invested in this event, to kind of move this forward in a more progressive way.
Excellent. Maz?
I have nothing to award, but very exciting to work with you all and serving this awesome community, and looking forward to work together to make this Iowa City a city that will work for everyone regardless. Thank you.
Great.
Welcome aboard, Mazza here. I guess I just want, I'll just throw a shout out to Kingsley. Great idea this Saturday. You know, I can't think of anything that is more important than our budget, but it's not always the most exciting, except that first hour that people actually come. And so I think anything we can do to get people more involved, more into what we're doing, because ultimately, you know, from time to time, people compliment me or us on various budgetary issues that we do, but we're really stewards of the people's money. And I think we can more effectively do that, the more oversight that we have from our collective bosses, which is 75,000 people, and the more that they have open access to our government, and the more that we can encourage them to do that through small target events, it's a great idea. So kudos to Kingsley Botchway. Other than that, I don't have a lot of other news.
Well said, Rockne.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Brilliantly done.
Kudos.
Okay, I have four things I want to mention. First, for people who are watching the broadcast of this meeting, I want you to note Mazza here, Saleh's presence, first night as a city council member. It's great to have you with us, Maz.
Thank you.
And also Pauline Taylor's new role as Mayor Pro Tem. Welcome aboard in that role, and thanks to Kingsley for serving so ably in the previous two years. So there's that. The second thing is I want to make sure you know that the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference will take place on March 11 through 14. It would be a really good conference for one or two of you to attend. Susan went to the Congressional City Conference last spring. Didn't you go to that one?
No.
Was it the year before?
Kingsley maybe did. I don't think.
Didn't you go to one in DC?
I'm sorry, I thought you did. Anyhow, my bad. It would be a really excellent conference for one or two of you to go to. And if you're interested, connect with Jeff about that. The other two things are, you know, other forms of information for you. I want you to know that I've been having conversations with President Harold and his staff at the university about jointly issuing a declaration kicking off the start of the university's sustainability theme semester. They've had themed semesters now for, I don't know, a couple of years or more. This one is sustainability. So there will be a resolution on our January 16 agenda concerning this joint declaration. Assuming we adopt the resolution, the declaration will jointly commit the university's themed semester to a local project that will tie together various elements along the Iowa River, the Iowa River Corridor in Iowa City, from Water Prairie Park in the north to Terry True Blood Park in the south. And, you know, I don't know what's always going to come out of that, but it's a joint declaration. There'll be students and courses and whatever focusing attention on that corridor, coming up with ideas, addressing problems, whatever. And meanwhile, we have an opportunity to focus some attention on it as well in our own ways. So look forward to that on your January 16 agenda. The last thing I want to mention is a meeting that John has tentatively scheduled with Senator Joe Bolcom and two officials from the Iowa Department of Transportation concerning the widening of I-380. As I understand it, John, you helped me here, as I understand it, the purpose of the meeting is basically to obtain information from Iowa DOT staff about the widening and about the extent to which they've considered either alternatives to the widening or actions that could enable greater use of alternative forms of transportation in that corridor.
Try to optimize the use of I-380.
Yeah, so I think it's appropriate for at least, I mean, I think I'll probably attend, but it would be appropriate for at the most one other council member to attend if any of you are interested in doing that.
Do you have a time yet, or?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's 10:30 AM on the 26th of this month, and it would be here in this room, I believe. I don't know what, did you set up a place?
I thought you were going to do that.
Oh.
You did do it. It's in the Helen Conference Room.
Oh, that's right. I did do it. So if you are interested, please let John know. All right, that's all I wanted to mention. Anything else anybody wants to say? Okay, Jeff?
I'm feeling a little bit more pressure than I was to start the day on the budget presentation, so thank Kingsley for that. I'm thinking about the intro music and all the else, everything else that's going to go with it.
Do it.
We've got a couple of days to figure that out. But real quick, a happy birthday to Simon Andrew.
Happy birthday!
Nothing like a 12-hour workday on your birthday, but thanks for sticking it out, Simon.
Well, we're letting you off easy. It's only 7:56.
I was going to say, they're not always as short, Mazza here.
I'll just say, welcome and welcome back to councilors, and Happy New Year.
Sue? Kelly? All right, looks to me like we're pretty much at the end. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.